Call to order. This is the Barrington Select Board Agenda Meeting for Monday, December 11th.
Roll call.
Gibson here.
Skocia.
Capello here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review and approval.
I'd like to make a motion.
I have one thing to add. Sorry.
Yes.
All right.
The Fire Department is continuing the emergency communications project, and they're needing to purchase the equipment, get the equipment on order for purchase, two mobile radios and eight portable radios. This is part of the ongoing project, but the lead times are long. We're buying it on state bid. And so the Select Board, the question before the Select Board is to authorize the money from the Emergency Communications Capital Reserve. So I'd like to add that to the consent agenda. Fire Department Radio Project, $41,500 from the Emergency Communications Capital Reserve.
That would be letter D.
Letter D.
And anything else that would be going on the consent agenda?
Nothing else on the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as.
Or the whole agenda.
Wait a minute, did Tracy do something before we do that?
Under new business, we're taking a vote. I would specifically like to exclude that from acceptance so that we could have discussion.
It's not in the consent agenda, though.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the whole consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Particop I.
Gibson I.
Mantra I.
Skocia.
Capello I. Public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? In online? If we do, I will read instructions for public comment.
I will say that we do, we do have resident in, in, with us just coming in to check things out and see what's going on. So people do do that from time to time, so.
And we welcome anyone to come.
Yeah, come on down, ask questions.
And with the record reflect that Select Board Mantra is here. Okay, so that, did we vote on this? I'm sorry. I think we have to vote. Close, I'm now closing public comment. Public hearing and invited guest. It looks like there's no one from the school board here, and I don't see anyone online from the school board. Okay. Moving along to the consent agenda. So we have items A, signatures, B, new requests for signatures, C, the homestead update and clarification of deed restriction, and D, the Fire Department radio project.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Particop I.
Gibson I.
Skocia.
Capello I. Appointments. Do we have any appointments this evening?
No appointments.
Okay, we can move on to staff report. Administrator Macabre.
Great, so this is our second meeting in December, so I don't read through the work anniversaries, but I still have them listed there. I worked with Rob Gibson and Scott Shepard from the Budget Committee last week to firm up an agenda and kind of a roadmap for our strategic planning session tomorrow. And so you all have it in email. I printed a copy in your packets here. And so, big picture, we'll start out and discuss the goals which surround educating residents and advocating for the identified priorities. Solicit input and finalize those goals. And then we'll go through the warrant, but through visiting the parameters listed here kind of for each category or identified topic. So talking about those areas, key phrases and naming the different initiatives that we're pursuing, trying to describe what it does instead of what it is, connecting those initiatives with the master plan and the CIP and surveys we've done, talking about the Budget Committee's perspective, you know, their subjective opinion of what we're pursuing. We're using the think tank to develop questions about each of the topics so we can get those questions and answers available before residents even start asking them. And then the communication plan and tools. So using the existing strategies we've done and exploring new strategies. And then the topics are the Capital Reserve contributions just kind of as a lump sum, the operating budget, the public safety building, community center, transfer station, ambulance revolving fund, community power, zoning amendments, Barrington Commons and tax incremental financing district, and the library.
And then the energy.
And yeah, we'll talk about energy with the Capital Reserve contributions. So, and the other thing that we'll talk about in the Capital Reserve contributions is we had a brief discussion, Rob, Scott, and I, about a compromise with unassigned fund balance and the warrant articles that would maybe be even more transparent to voters. And that compromise is we have about half as much unassigned fund balance available as we have warrant article requests. And so we could distribute that $750,000 proportionally among the warrant articles so that each one would be 50% funded from unassigned fund balance and 50% funded from the tax rate. So none would be funded any more or less than another, but that way the tax rate impact would be reflected. So not for discussion tonight, but think on it, and we'll discuss it, discuss it as a, as a group tomorrow. It will be more complicated, which I don't think is a good thing because we're going to have like a 45 warrant-long ballot this year with all the zoning amendments, but for discussion. That's why we're having a meeting to talk about it.
And the time tomorrow is 4:30?
Yes, it is. That'd be good to have the time on the agenda.
Four or 4:30?
4:30. Four on Thursday.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, what's on Thursday?
Thursday's the tax increment financing.
And Wednesday's housing.
Yeah.
Meeting a day.
Right, I know.
For you, who signed up for these volunteer roles?
Thursday's conservation and Friday's library.
It'll be like an hour, two hours tomorrow?
Two.
So it's 4:30 to 6:30?
Yeah, two. Questions on the agenda?
No.
Cool. Okay.
Lots of work done, thank you.
And I hope we can maximize the productivity of the large group that we'll have. I'm looking forward to it. So I took the time to prepare or reduce to writing kind of the full background act back to 2016 of Richardson Pond Dam. I'll just skip to the conclusion because that's the most important part. Recent conversations with the dam bureau, they are comfortable with our progress and recognize that these decisions, especially political decisions, take time, and it's important to get them right. And so they're satisfied with our progress and are comfortable if we take our time to make an informed decision about our plan for the Richardson Pond Dam and then develop a funding mechanism for it. And so, as supported by the Advisory Budget Committee and as we discussed at the last meeting, I think we scrap any plans for funding all or a part of the Richardson Pond Dam, the 2024 warrant, and revisit that once we've made a decision on exactly what we're going to do. So that's the conclusion of that, and that's all I have.
Yeah, when I joined the Select Board, I looked at the proposal about reconstructing the dam, and there was nothing there about taking it down. So I was like, well, we don't have enough data here. And I feel like we still don't have enough data here.
The Conservation Commission plans to pay for an environmental impact study, which would be a requirement by itself before anything like that could even happen anyway.
Right.
We'll need some time to get that done and digested.
Right.
I'm fine with waiting on it.
Excellent.
Cool.
So thank you for letting me weigh in on that. And item B, Administrator Cottle, do you have anything for us tonight?
So this is a little, this is going to be a little bit strange next week, asking for your attention to it. It's going to be a little bit weird. Normally, we close out our docu-signs on Tuesday. We're going to do that, and then later on Tuesday, I'm going to send out the packet that's usually on Thursday. This is because of the holiday. So in order to get everything processed, AP and payroll and time and make sure everybody is paid appropriately, we're going to process everything on Thursday. So if you can keep an eye on your inboxes for the docu-sign, we'd appreciate it if you could sign it as soon as you can because as soon as we can close it out with three signatures, we're going to.
Okay. That's between Tuesday and Thursday.
Yes, so Thursday morning, we have to have it done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So moving ahead to old business, Barrington Commons and Town Center Tax Incremental Financing District Development Program and Financing Plan. So we have some updates on this.
Yes, and even more updates than what's in the town administrator report when I finalized that last week. So since June, the Select Board has been talking about this 13-acre lot that's for sale in the town center. It's been on the real estate market since then, and there haven't been any offers. We've been working with the developer to try to find a way that maybe the town could get some skin in the game in the town center to accomplish this vision we've talked about. And so at the last meeting, the, or two meetings ago, the Select Board authorized me to start negotiating the terms of a purchase and sale that would establish a TIF district, Tax Incremental Financing District, to fund, as the financial tool, to fund the acquisition and improvements of this lot and general town center improvements. And so the first thing that I want to talk about is the Tax Incremental Financing District that's proposed. And so that's what you have information for in the town administrator report, and that's this document. And so this document is similar but markedly different than the document from last year. In my tear report, I emphasized the three biggest areas that it's different. And I think these are the important areas, and I suspect we'll talk about this a lot tomorrow when we're talking about how we message this plan so voters can make informed decisions. First, this plan is much smaller. You see on the cover and a larger version farther in the document, this district is 484 acres, which is about a third of the size of what was proposed last year. It's much more directed, it's a smaller district. It's shorter, so last year we proposed a 20-year term, and residents expressed concern about the length of that term, how many select boards could turn over in that time. And so this plan is proposed at eight years, and the community would still have the opportunity anytime during that eight years to cancel the Tax Incremental Financing District, or anytime within that eight years they could choose to extend it. It's still voters' decisions. And finally, it's more focused and more specific. Last year's plan was very ambiguous. We had big, we, we had a lot of big-picture goals that we tried to communicate to residents. The problem we, is, a problem was that we didn't have anything tangible to say, if you do this, we will do that, because a lot of it was conditioned on property being available and different goals and objectives, objectives that we had. And so those differences are reflected in many of the sections of this document. And so we won't go through the whole document, but probably the most important section is the Section 6, the District Establishment and Development Programs. And that's on page, starts on page 6. So one of the reasons it was so ambiguous last year is because when you establish a Tax Incremental Financing District, you can't spend that money on anything that isn't listed in this section of the document when it's initially established. And so the powers that be got together and said, well, there's a million things that we could want to do with this Tax Incremental Financing District, so let's include it all in there. And that's what we did, and I think that concerned residents. And so this area is more specific. It still talks about different categories that we want to accomplish, accomplish certain goals, but now we're talking about this specific lot, this specific 13-acre lot, the acquisition and development of that lot. There are still some other items included in here. One, which I think will be especially popular with folks who do any kind of drop-off or pickup at the elementary school and middle school, we're proposing to install school zones at the, on Route 125 in the vicinity of the elementary school and on Route 9 in the vicinity of the middle school, and potentially even a flashing light at the middle school where one doesn't exist now, just flashing yellow and, and red. But those types of improvements that really establish our town center and, and make it a place where we can have large volumes of traffic coming through, but also a clean area for residents to gather. So trying to think if there are any other big changes. Questions about this document, the list of properties, the map, other details?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Barrington Commons and Town Center Tax Incremental Financing District Development Program and Financing Plan as presented and include the establishment of the Barrington Commons and the Town Center Tax Incremental Financing District on the 2024 town meeting warrant.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Particop I.
Gibson I.
Mantra I.
Skocia.
Capello I.
Okay, so the development today was that the Select Board, as I said two meetings ago, authorized me to start negotiating a purchase and sale, which I did, and with Slukma Skocia's help, on last Monday, we met with the owner of the property and their broker to discuss the town's interest and what that would look like from a, how the terms would look, given the town's plan to acquire this property with the Tax Incremental Financing District as a funding mechanism. And so I'm glad to be able to show you the letter of intent, which is, which we've been working with the broker for the property owner and the property owner, and go through those terms really quick. And I'll tell you that what I would be looking for from the Select Board is an authorization, just like we did with the library, proposed library property, an authorization to take this letter of intent through a purchase and sale and for me to sign on behalf of the town so that we can get under agreement with this property before the end of the year. And so we've put a lot of work into trying to work out all of the foundation of the terms and conditions of a purchase and sale. I'll just go through those with you quickly now. So the purchase price, so it's been on the market for 1.2 million. The price that we came to terms at, at this point, is $935,000. And the deposit structure is twofold. The sellers would like a $25,000 deposit upon execution of the agreement, and that would be non-refundable pending the outcome of town meeting in March. So that would be skin in the game that the town would put forward to secure, to take the property off the market and give residents the opportunity. So after the vote, if the proposal is approved by voters, then that $25,000 would go towards the purchase price. The $35,000 deposit is essentially a second deposit that, that they would want after town meeting approval is passed. Pretty sure this is to help satisfy some of their brokered fee terms. So obviously, it would, this is only, would happen if it was approved at town meeting, but we'd have to fund that before we had revenue from the Tax Incremental Financing District. That's the only important note about that. Yes?
That'd be a total of $60,000.
Correct. $25,000, that's a non-refundable kind of traditional deposit. The $35,000, it's listed as a deposit. The purchase and sale, it might even be in a separate category, but it's like an advance first payment. So that leaves, we're now in the payment section, so that leaves a balance of $875,000. And so the structure of this for any land transfer geeks out there is almost like an installment acquisition where the town would accept title at the end of the installment payments. And this is mutually beneficial for the town and the seller for a variety of reasons. But that structure now takes, we have a balance of $875,000 that we would pay, and the seller would accumulate interest owed on that outstanding balance. So it's compound interest, but it's compounded annually, so it's not, you know, it doesn't run away. The interest rate for the first four years that was negotiated is 4.95%, which is an incredibly attractive interest rate, given the, the current interest rate environment. That would go up if we hadn't paid the balance in full after four years. That would go up to 6.96%, and that's simply to incentivize the town to, to buy it as soon as we can, essentially. So still in the payment section, the 2024 payment is a little bit interesting because if voters establish the Tax Incremental Financing District in March, we don't start collecting that revenue until July. And at that point, we're really only collecting half of the revenue for the first year because we issue tax bills twice a year. And so this is the only area that might change a little bit in the final negotiation of the purchase and sale to find the exact balance. The seller would like some capital upfront, so as much money as we can give them, I think they'd like to see. We won't have a ton of capital upfront because that first year, it's, you know, split into two payments and nothing has accumulated. So right now, what's proposed is that once we issue both of those tax bills, we pay them at least 90% or $150,000 from that. So $150,000 is set as the minimum payments throughout the term of the agreement. And so this would protect us if we don't have the full $150,000 in the first year, as long as it's 90% of what we collect, that would be, you know, meet the intent of this portion of the agreement.
Lesser amount.
The lesser of the two. It could be more, but it has to be at least 90% of what we collected or 150%. So, and then starting in 2025, it would just be annual payments, minimum of $150,000, no maximum, no repayment penalty. So if we received a grant or if the Tax Incremental Financing District had a ton of development and we had more revenue than we anticipated, we could pay all of it off early and obviously save on interest at that point. And would pay no later than August 15th of 2031, the full balance. The, the contingencies that we would plan for would be if, for some reason, the funds wouldn't be available from the Tax Incremental Financing District. What this agreement says is that if we default on a payment essentially after the first year and, and can't make a full $150,000 payment, that we would have until the following April 1st to fund the balance of the property. So that could be a town meeting warrant initiative, but also cited in here, it could be that we license or sell a part of the property for commercial development and come up with the, the difference at that point. So that's what this section.
That's definitely been added.
Yes. Yes. So how the, those are listed as examples, so there could be other ways that we could come up with the money, but essentially after a default, we would have until April 1st. So we don't just immediately lose rights to the property, which. Contingencies, so obviously we would be able to make improvements on the property even prior to the transfer of title. And the, this is all contingent on approval by town meeting in March. The closing would happen once the final payment is made. Termination, so for a variety of reasons that we'd want to terminate, the rights we reserved here are the ability to remove non-permanent improvements to the property. So if we make investments in the property, we could retain some of those investments at whatever level that we could. And then upon termination, we would forfeit rights and access to. And we would also agree that the taxes on the property, because the town would be the user but not the owner, would be abated. So right now, it's in current use values, and so the tax bill is single-digit dollars. There's no tax revenue at, at this moment. If it were commercially developed, there would be both a land use change tax and there would be taxation on the value. Town's not going to pay its own taxes, and so the seller doesn't, or the seller doesn't want to pay those taxes either while they still own it. And so the town would agree to abate those taxes, which is what it would look like if the town owned it. Those are the terms. So.
Five or six years from now, when the deed is transferred, still doing the 50-50 value, like I think when you close on a $600,000 home, $5,000 or something at the county level?
The town is not subject to transfer tax.
Okay.
The town is exempt from transfer tax.
Is the 50% of the seller's portion written into the agreement?
It will be.
Okay.
Yes, yep, that will be their responsibility. Good question, though.
We haven't talked about how we would, where we would get the money for the $60,000.
Yes, excellent point. So I think that there are two good options that we could consider for both. One, we have a balance available in the incident fund from 2023. I don't have the exact balance, but I think that could fund all or most of the $25,000 deposit. And even if that full $25,000 wasn't available in the incident fund, there is enough other unspent 2023 appropriations that, that we wouldn't be over budget. But importantly, I think most of it's available in the incident fund, which the Select Board includes in the budget for opportunities that come up throughout the year that it's hard to budget for. And so this would be most closely aligned with the purpose of that portion of the budget. The second option, and probably the best option for the $35,000 portion, but could also be an option for the $25,000 portion, is the town's available balance in the ARPA fund.
Tiff Warren.
To separately appropriate funds for that. I don't know if it actually could be in the establishing the Tax Incremental Financing District warrant article, but it could be a separate one.
Other thought?
They don't need to put it in a warrant.
I think it would confuse people more.
Yeah. Yeah, about that tomorrow. I think Connor's just, he's making sure of the payment structure, wants to bring this letter of intent and time.
Initially, I was more comfortable with the ARPA funds only because, or it's a non-refundable deposit. In a way, it's a gamble. If the voters don't support it, you know, it's money lost. It's, I don't know if ARPA funds have any restrictions on.
They don't.
The tangible nature of what we're getting, but I think that that is easier to justify. I guess with the, with the incident funds, I mean, those are also discretionary, which they're, they're tied to anything else that we, that 24.
And if you don't spend the funds out of the incident fund at the end of the year, that reverts unassigned fund balance, right? So it doesn't, that appropriation lapses. You can't use it specifically for anything, but it's not lost. The residents, that would still benefit the residents at some point, just the same way that ARPA funds would, right? We're going to spend all of our ARPA funds on identified priorities.
So would the motion for this be?
I drafted one.
Then we, would we also include in that, I'm thinking of funding, to exhaust the balance of the 2023 incident fund towards those two payments with any additional required dollars coming from ARPA funding?
I would just contemplate the $25,000 at this point. One, because we wouldn't be able to use the incident fund for the $35,000 deposit because that will be next year, not this year. But I think if it's the wish of the board, exhausting the incident fund and then using ARPA funds for the difference would be an appropriate addition to the motion.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to allow Connor to take the letter of intent and allow him.
Include the establishment of a Barrington Tax Incremental Financing District on the 24.
No, no, the, look at the rest of the email.
So it's making a motion to authorize entering a purchase and sale to require MAP 239, Lot 7, through a Tax Incremental Financing District and to authorize the town administrator to sign all accompanying documents. Would you like to amend your motion?
Second.
And the funding for the deposit, exhausting the incident fund.
And I, I would then make a secondary motion with this, that, that would be.
Let's vote on this one first, then.
Okay, yes.
So Tracy made the motion, Jim seconded it.
Particop I.
Gibson I.
Mantra I.
Capello I. Now the second motion.
Motion to utilize the balance in the 2023 incident fund up to $25,000 for the first deposit, and any amount required beyond that would come from?
ARPA funds.
Second.
Roll call.
Particop I.
Gibson I.
Capello I. Motion passes.
Awesome, big progress. Thank you.
Super exciting.
Yes.
It's really exciting.
It is exciting.
Similar to, I'm talking about purchase and sales with libraries, that's worth enough data.
Yes, okay, so we are like this close. I, I I, I think I just have to talk to the broker once more, and then I will sign the purchase and sale and we'll be under agreement. We had the commercial building inspection on Thursday. We had a separate HVAC inspection on Friday. All of those results have, or the HVAC inspection results aren't back, but all of those results will be discussed at the Friday building committee meeting for the library. The purchase and sale has never been in jeopardy. We've never been in jeopardy of getting under agreement, but it, it just seems like with all of the steps, right? Like I talked to the real estate attorney, the real estate attorney talks to the broker, the broker talks to HCA, there's attorneys and real estate folks at HCA. And at one point, it seemed very much like a game of telephone, like, and so when I talked to the broker, he said, oh, well, you know, this piece is so complicated. I said, well, no, that's been resolved. And so I've cut the town's, the communication of the town's real estate attorney out of it. I am consulting the town's real estate attorney, working directly with the broker. That has made faster progress. And we are, the terms are all in agreement. The last outstanding question is the lead-lined room. They have agreed to remove all the medical equipment, and the question remains about if the lead-lined room is considered medical equipment or not. And so if it is not, then during our due diligence period, we would get a quote for what the remediation of a lead-lined room is and then evaluate that with the purchase price and the other terms. But we just want to know, and so that's, once I have that answer, we'll be able to sign a purchase and sale and be under agreement. But it has been an order's process.
So after Friday, you think you'll have figures on what the cost to renovate?
So I, I communicated through email with the library trustee chair, and their goal is to have numbers after their meeting on the 15th. And that meeting on the 15th is, they will review all of the information. They, there still might be updates after that, but that will be the finalization of the numbers going into the public hearing. The public hearing, January 8th, the numbers can go down, they can't go up. And then the last opportunity for update is, of course, deliberative session where the numbers can go up or down. Now, the numbers that I think are most likely to change are, one, the fundraising numbers. So we'll get the most up-to-date number in February and update the warrant structure based on that update. Another number that's possible to change is if they hear from the humanities grant. That would make a reduction. And so I, I don't think that their plans for the building, I think they plan to finalize those numbers on Friday, and I don't think those numbers will change between then and March. The funding sources might change, which would change the bond amount.
Um, I'm sorry. Will we also hear about the community center grant by then? What's the deadline for that?
The community center grant, they have advertised early March.
Oh, okay.
As the, when they will announce the results of that grant. So it is reasonable to expect that residents will be voting on that warrant article before we know if we have received the grant. Fortunately, the structure of the warrant article will be such that it'll be contingent on receiving that grant. And so it will be clear that if voters vote yes, but we don't receive the grant, there's no appropriation, there's no, just null and void at that point.
So moving on to item D, finalize the 2024 operating budget and proposed warrants for the January 8th public hearing.
The only piece of new information here, and I sent this out last week, but I included a printed copy, is just the updated CPI data through October. The previous update ended in August. There's been a slight uptick, uptick. It's not dramatic. I think the average last time was like 2.5%. And so it's up to 2.84% with September and October data.
I found that very helpful, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you for asking for it.
Yeah. I think that certainly gives us justification for, you know, going forward with the cola.
Do you have a comment?
I was gonna make a motion if you were ready.
Okay.
Let's go.
Remind me what the motion exactly is with these, because we're going to be discussing these tomorrow night as well.
So the only thing that I would expect to be on the table for changing anything tomorrow is the energy committee capital reserve contribution. Everything else, the content and the details would remain the same into the budget public hearing in January. So finalizing the warrant articles and the budget ahead of the budget public hearing.
And the priority order.
Well, yeah, so.
We'll go over that tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Good question.
I would like to make a motion to finalize the 2024 operating budget and warrant, warrant as proposed and recommended by the advisory budget committee.
Second. Okay. Tracy, roll call.
Hard copy.
Okay.
That includes what call on?
Three.
3%.
3%, right. Not too good.
I think the new data clearly supports what was in the budget. So it's very appreciated that we now have the data back to support what's being recommended. Anyway, first and second, hard copy.
Gibson.
Capelloi. All right. New business, Barrington Highway and Transfer Collective bargaining agreement. So we had a request to enter into non-public to discuss this.
I'd like to make a motion to enter non-public.
For the reasons, purposes of personnel.
And I would second that.
So the select board's going to step into the conference room here, and we will be back in.
A few minutes.
A few minutes.
Okay, you're back.
All right, so we've exited non-public. Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
We approve the tentative contract. With the, what is the union number?
Make a motion to approve the tentative agreement as presented and include the cost items in the 2024 town meeting warrant.
That's what I said.
So moved?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Articup, hi.
Give tonight.
Sure, God. Go, sir.
Yep, yellow eye.
And this chair, just for the community's benefit to bookend the process, so the town has spent the last couple of months negotiating an initial contract with the Highway Department Transfer Station collective bargaining agreement. They're represented by AFSMI Council of 93, and so that process was a tremendously cooperative process. We had three meetings, which anybody who sat at a negotiation table to establish an initial contract with three meetings is a tremendous effort. It requires a tremendous amount of effort, but we worked efficiently through the process. So this agreement is a three-year contract through 2027, and there are really five key changes to the current practice that this contract establishes. First, it establishes, it solidifies a seasonal schedule of Monday to Thursday for work from the first Monday in June through Labor Day. It counts paid leave towards the calculation of overtime through the winter season from December 1st through March 31st. It expands the existing on-call program to include Fridays in the summer. That was an identified operational deficiency where stuff sometimes comes up on Fridays. And so having on-call available for those Fridays is good. And then the on-call during the weekends in the winter remains. It also establishes the uniform dress provided by the town on a one-time basis and then maintained by employees for a $750 annual stipend. So that's boots and the rest of their clothing. And then the step in any wage increases, a step or cost of living, is simply what the select board includes in the operating budget for all other employees. And so there's no, there's no specific negotiated wage increases in the contract. That would be up to the select board during each budget development process. So what residents will, the select board just voted to ratify that tentative agreement. And so once the union representation does the same thing, we will have an agreement subject to the decision of voters on the cost items of this contract. And so summarized in my town administrator report, and this will be available online, it's, well, this part's available online, but it will be available online alongside the warrant documents. For this warrant article shows the cost items for years 2024, 2025, and 2026. And those categories are in wages, the paid leave counting towards overtime, the clothing stipend, and the expanded on-call. And those, the, it will be important for residents to understand that the wage increases that are included in these cost items aren't duplicated in the operating budget. The wage increases for the employees, the Highway Department Transfer Station, will rely on the passage of this warrant article. That's how negotiated contracts work. And so the, it will be important that the select board help make sure residents understand what they're voting on and the importance of what they're voting on for the highway and transfer station employees. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Moving along, select board member reports and concerns. Tracy, we'll start with you.
We have a zoning board meeting the 20th, so nothing coming up till then. Review of various scenarios coming up this week at the Land Use Master Housing Plan Committee meeting, and I think that's all I have.
Energy committee met last Thursday. Not a lot new to report there. We'll talk tomorrow night about the addition of a warrant for the capital fund. They reviewed things like community power, Town Hall Solar, they're going to put together a RFP through Connor's office as requested in the meeting last week to get some quotes for Town Hall solar panels. And this Thursday is Constipation Commission, and Friday is the Library Building Committee.
Busy week.
School board met on the 5th of December. They brought their budget down a little bit to $29,574,284. They're going to present it to their advisory budget committee tomorrow, so I'll probably miss that meeting at six o'clock tomorrow, so double that pleasure. This might be of interest, and I don't know if Chief Joy is involved with this yet, but they voted not to stop school, middle school for the 23rd of January, so. Chief Joy has suggested they close because of open carrier, concealed carrier, whatever the law is, but they don't want to do that, so. I assume George is going to talk to them. There was a transfer station meeting today, 30, which I could not remember. They were going to discuss increasing the costs, the prices they charge for various things. I'm not sure what, I don't know.
No, but this is consistent with the select board's support of the transfer station revolving fund. So they're going to be recommending increases that the select board will consider at the January 8th meeting to support the bringing in additional revenue to set aside in the revolving fund to fund the doubling of costs, which we will experience in 2027, once our current sweetheart contract expires.
Got the union contract done and the personnel policy, I think we're going to meet Wednesday and wrap that up. Personnel policy shortly.
Private Roads Class 6 Committee finalizing a couple of different things that they have on there for roads and what should be on, what shouldn't. The tech committee, their projects are in motion, still going. Rec Department, they did a great job down at the soiree, and they're into winter sports.
I was unable to attend the last planning board meeting, so I have nothing to report. There is a meeting next week. So we now enter the second public comment. Is there anyone who's interested in making a public comment? Please move forward.
Rick Walker, 24 Green Hill Road. I just want to express my disappointment in the fact that you folks agreed to take and have a $25,000 down payment on a piece of land that's not refundable. I think that's short-sighted to take a chance. And with taxpayer money, there's a lot of items on the agenda that the voters are going to vote on. People are upset. My personal property taxes had a significant increase. I get it. I'm not going to vote for everything on that article. I'll do as a responsible taxpayer. I'll look at what I think I can afford and I'll support. So I kind of view, and I'm in the minority, and that's okay, but I view the fact that when you put a $25,000 non-refundable deposit down, you're basically telling the taxpayers you got to support this, you're going to be able to 25,000 bucks. I, I just think that's unfortunate that the five of you chose to do that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
There's a hand up online, Paul Thibodeau.
Good evening.
Yep.
So I didn't understand on, when you guys were discussing the purchase and sales agreement that Chief Walker just spoke about. I had my hand up. It was the first time I'd seen that contract. I don't know if it was available and for the public to review or comment on beforehand. And that's a question, was it?
So the, would the select board like me to answer?
Yes, please.
I guess I don't understand the question exactly, so there's no purchase and sale agreement yet. What the select board did tonight is review the terms of a letter of intent, which would become a purchase and sale, and those items. And so the select board have discussed those terms and the acquisition of the property through a tax incremental financing district on and off publicly since June. Two meetings ago, which I think was the November 27th meeting, the select board publicly authorized the, authorized me to start negotiating those terms with the seller. You know, coupled with a proposal for a tax incremental financing district, so.
And that's the part I wanted to address, not to interrupt you, Connor, but I think you're going in a different direction than my question.
My question is, the terms of the purchase and sales agreement, the contract that you put on the screen earlier, was that available for the public to view that specific page before tonight? No, that was a summary that was created today based on the negotiation process since November. So the terms were discussed and available, you know, at various meetings, but that summary and the progress of that document was from today.
All right, well, I have to echo Chief Walker's concern about putting out a $25,000 non-refundable deposit if the voters decline to, to move forward with his purchase. We're out 25 grand. Wouldn't it have been, and since you haven't signed into this, onto this agreement, part one, and I have two parts, is wouldn't it have been a more prudent way to offer $25,000 more than the agreed purchase price than to take a chance in losing $25,000? Would the, would the seller have entertained that? A and B, I think I understood that the financing was going to be done by the seller. Is that correct?
Essentially. It, it's not exactly like that, but yes.
Okay, so my second question is, he's holding the mortgage on the property. Why isn't the town getting a deed to that property when, when the mortgage is signed?
It's, so there is, there won't be a mortgage, the, and that's why it's not the, it isn't seller financed in the traditional sense of the structure. The, the town will receive title upon final payment, is how the, the structure of the letter intent is, which I would expect to carry over to the purchase and sale.
Then who's holding the paper on the note?
There isn't a note, so it's, it is an installment agreement between the seller and the town, is what's proposed, where the town would make payments. And so that structure derived from the funding source, which is the tax incremental financing district. And the, the trouble of that funding source is that the availability of those funds and the amount of those funds isn't known precisely ahead of time. And so the select board evaluated two options for, you know, considering funding and acquisition of a property like this. One was with a bond where you, you carry debt upfront and pay that back over term. And the second was through the tax incremental financing district, which has drawbacks because of funding availability, both amount and timing. And so the structure of the, the, the use of the property, where the seller retains the title until the last installment payment is made, allows the town, and the structure of the agreement would show minimum payments, but no maximum payments. Where the town would make those payments towards the property essentially as funding is available, but with no upper limit, and would take title to the property upon the last payment. So it's not seller financed in the traditional sense. There's no mortgage. There's no note that's held. Both the town and the seller would retain some rights to the property until the town owns it outright.
It's a pretty complicated financing arrangement.
Yes.
It, it appears, and I'd love to see the, the old documents, I mean, I really would, but you guys voted on it tonight, and the selectmen authorized you to move forward to enter into this contract on behalf of the town. But it, it sounds like the seller can receive these payments, and since we do not have title, he doesn't even have to foreclose on us. Those payments are non-refundable if we, for some reason, do not, do not make the final installment to the seller. That's correct, right?
No, not exactly. So I mean, the letter of intent includes provisions for default, like you're talking about. So if, so the town doesn't lose rights, lose the rights that it has gained immediately on a default. The language that's proposed gives the town the opportunity to, if, in the event of a default, whether that's lack of fund availability or some other, you know, catastrophic situation. Gives the town until the following April 1st to buy out the remaining balance of the purchase price with the interest that's accrued. And so the two items that were, which were included, which the select board had talked about previously, which would be likely, is one, going to voters with a warrant article to fund the balance. So in the event of a default, go to voters and say, okay, do you want to buy out this agreement or not? Or selling or licensing a portion of the property for the, the balance necessary. And so those provisions would carry over, you know, certainly into a purchase and sale, and there would be a lot more meat on those bones as far as those what-if contingencies where the town would retain rights to the property, not simply lose rights to the property in a default.
So if both of those options were to fail, the voters would vote no, and the town didn't, didn't, couldn't somehow, for some reason unknown, come up with the financing to pay off the balance. Then the town is then in default, and the seller, who would also be the owner, would simply retain all monies paid as well as the real estate because he never transferred a deed. Am I right?
Right.
I understand that?
Yes.
Okay. That's my comments. Obviously, I don't agree with the contract in many ways. But I guess there's nothing I can do about it except be a citizen and vote. And so thanks for hearing me out, you guys.
Thanks, Paul.
Any, any other comments online?
Don't see any other hands up.
Okay. We have now ended public comment.
I, I'm not sure I have a public comment, but I, before we close the meeting, I have something I just wanted to bring up.
Okay, so the next item would be adjournment, so let's talk about that now.
So I had a request from a Barrington resident who was looking for an absentee ballot and went to the town site and was perplexed or confused only by one word and asked me to bring it up at the meeting so that if potentially it can be changed, that we do change it. On the town clerk's page, the 2024 state election absentee request might lead a voter to think that they could not request a presidential primary absentee ballot. When in fact, when you click on that and you read the four or five opportunities to request an absentee ballot, you can check off presidential primary, you can check off state primary, you can check off state general. Is the town clerk tied to that verbiage on the front screen, or could it read 2024 election absentee request?
So I think we could add a clarifying note. So the absentee ballot request for the state and general elections is a state document. So the document can't change, but I think we can accomplish what you and the resident are looking for by including a note that says, essentially lists those four functions of that absentee ballot request.
Click here for this, okay. I, I think that would be helpful for.
That's helpful.
Okay. That was it?
All right, so upcoming meetings, so tomorrow, December 12th, we'll have the joint meeting with the ABC from 4:30 to 6:30. Then we'll have our first public hearing on January 8th. We'll meet on January 22nd and February 12th. We'll meet on January 22nd and February 12th. February 3rd is a deliberative session, and March 12th is the vote.
Great. Motion adjourned.
I was going to say FYI, the school's going to be somewhat different. They're going to have their deliberative session in February 3rd.
Oh, well, we're on the 3rd. Well, some other day.
It'll be some other day.
Motion to adjourn.
I think it's the 10th, actually.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
Articel five.
Gibbs night.
Sure guy.
It's cool shit.
Yep, yellow eye. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.